I now call the August the 13th meeting of Planning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Paulier?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Greenberg.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Mako.
Here.
Paulier.
Shepaka.
Here.
Soriano is absent. Tamarkin.
Here.
We do have one change to the published agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to please announce that.
Yes, that would be the removal of item CU-0001-2025.
Thank you. So if anybody in the public was planning on speaking to that application, it is postponed. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June 25th meeting?
Still not.
Move by Ms. Paulier. Is there a second?
Second, Greenberg.
Second by Mr. Greenberg. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Paulier.
Yes.
Greenberg.
Yes.
Hicks.
Abstain.
Mako.
Yes.
Shepaka.
Yes.
Tamarkin.
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, would anybody in the public that would like to address the commission, please direct your attention to our Assistant City Attorney for some instruction. Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are now at the public hearing portion of the meeting. The public hearing will operate as follows. Administrative staff will make a presentation or comment on the application. The applicant or their representative may then make a presentation or comment on the application. The applicant has 10 minutes to present, and additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. Public comment will then be open for three minutes allowed per speaker. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. Speakers must complete a speaker slip and come to the podium and state their name and address. The applicant will then be given 10 minutes to comment. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. If there is more than one application pending for a particular address, the presentation on each application may be consolidated and presented as one. At this time, will persons wishing to present testimony this evening, please rise and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, state "I do." Thank you.
I'll now ask Ms. McGuire to please read the first application into the record.
We have V-0019-2025 to consider a variance application to vary section 1103.07E, large lot residential of the codified ordinances of the city of Gehanna, for property located at 400 Brammer Court, parcel ID 025-011408. Current zoning R1, large lot residential. Corey Shu, applicant.
Thank you. We'll now turn the meeting over to the administration for their presentation.
This is a variance application for 400 Brammer Court. Here on the zoning map, you can see the location of the property underneath the red star. It is zoned R1, which is large lot residential, in the same zoning district as the rest of the neighborhood. There is a bit of history that goes along with this application. In November of 2024, there was a variance application for a pool house at the property. At that time, the pool house was proposed at 17 feet, which exceeded the maximum structure height allowed by code by two feet. At that meeting, staff incorrectly stated that if the structure was reduced to 16 and a half feet in height, then it would be administratively approvable. This is through something called a de minimis variance, which essentially means if something deviates from code 10% or less, then it could be administratively approved. In this case, that 10% cannot be applied to structure or building height. So for, in order for the pool house to exceed 15 feet, a variance application approved by Planning Commission is required. In January, after the meeting, the plans on the building permit were revised to show the pool house at 16 and a half feet tall. At this time, staff reached out to the applicant through our permitting software over email and by phone to state that the maximum permitted height is actually 15 feet and not 16 and a half feet. And we needed to see revised plans in order to approve the building permit, but those plans were never provided. So at this point, the building permit is still open and has not been approved, and no building inspections have been performed. That same month, code enforcement issued a violation notice at the site because the pool house was built without any approved building permit. And then in May, this variance application was submitted by the applicant in order to address the outstanding code violation. So today, the applicant is requesting approval of another variance to allow for the pool house to exceed the maximum height for accessory structures. The pool house is 542 square feet and is now 16 and a half feet tall instead of 17 feet tall. As stated, the maximum height for accessory structures in residential districts is 15 feet. The structure is between 9.9 and 12 feet from the side northern property line and around 23 feet from the rear property line. The applicant states that the reason for the increased height above 15 feet is to allow for more sun onto the deck. There is an existing four-foot tall fence around the backyard and some tall trees along the rear property line that partially screen the structure. However, there are no trees or additional landscaping along the north property line between the structure and that adjacent property. Here is a site plan. You can see the location of the pool house marked in red, and then the four-foot tall fence that goes around the pool house in the backyard. And you can see that the pool house is the closest to the northern property line, which is the area where there's no additional screening besides the fence. Here is an image of the structure taken from along Brammer Court. You can see what the structure looks like today, as well as the four-foot tall fence in front of it. And then the variance being requested is for chapter 1103.07E, which states that the maximum height for accessory structures is 15 feet, and the proposed pool house exceeds that by one and a half feet. This is the variance criteria that must be met in order for the application to be approved. And finally, staff recommends disapproval of the variance as submitted, as there are no special circumstances to necessitate a variance in this case. And staff is unaware of any other accessory structures in this area that exceed 15 feet. As shown in the street view image, the fence is only four feet high and does not screen the majority of the structure, and therefore is very visible from the right of way as well as the property to the north. As mentioned in one of the previous slides, the applicant and the property owner were notified many times through different means that the structure height needed to be reduced, and it was not. However, a one and a half foot increase is minor in nature, and the height was reduced by six inches between now and the previous application. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now open the public comment portion of the meeting. And if the applicant is present and would like to make some comments, please approach the lectern. And if you could state your name, address, and relationship to the project.
John Estery, 400 Brammer Court, Gehanna, Ohio, and I'm the property owner. She ruined my whole speech. That was a very good assessment of how we got here. Last time, it was a split decision, a tie vote, so we did lose the variance. With all of us thinking that, you know, the admin approval would prevent the committee from having to approve a variance in the admin. Negligence is no excuse. I don't know what happened, but we didn't get the notice and started building because expense is not an excuse either, but my contractor had already built the structure in his shop and, you know, needed to get income because I haven't paid him yet. So I do have my neighbor, who is the north lot, willing to make a statement as well that, you know, it does not impede his view or impose on his structure or his enjoyment of his backyard either. The main criteria for building this was that my daughters and my live-in girlfriend, that I couldn't impede their shade. So with the taller structure, you would get more sun early. That side is where you enter the pool, so it's a very popular place to sunbathe and just get into the pool to cool off. So that's it. That's all I got.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to make comments? Stay tuned for questions. And then if you could state your name and address and relationship to the project, and then you have three minutes to make comments.
Thank you. Eric Jones. I live just north. My backyard is adjacent to John's backyard. And it's interesting, I'm looking at this picture now. Yeah, so I'm just north of that, and you're looking east. That structure is squarely in position from my back patio, but it's a small screenshot to see the pergola. There is a very large maple tree, probably maybe cuts the pergola right in half that blocks a significant viewing, point of view from my yard going north. And in the summertime, all those trees have a lot of leaves on them. So from a screening standpoint, it's great for those who may have issue with it, but I haven't heard one neighbor express any concerns about that. When, when this was initially built, and John talked about it quite a bit, and after it was built, after he talked about it quite a bit, I thought it was going to be bigger than this. And when it went up and looking from my point of view from my patio, I'm like, that looks pretty cool. So from a neighbor standpoint, I think it looks great. So I have no issues with it whatsoever. And as the trees, and we've got a couple other trees that we're going to be planting in the corner, where our corners meet, probably next spring, not because of that, but we want some more shade on that area of the yard because it gets fried during the summertime. So I have no issues with it. I think it looks fantastic. If it was higher on the north end of the pergola, that would maybe make it look a lot different, but I think it's been beautifully designed, and I think it's a great addition.
Thank you. So Mr. Jones was the only speaker slip that I had. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to make a comment? If so, please approach the lectern. Seeing no other comments, we will close the public hearing and open it up to questions from the commission, starting with Mr. Greenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question to the clerk, where's, has there been any other communications regarding this application from neighbors?
No, there have not been.
Okay. And I asked the applicant, are there any additional plans to screen, like more trees, bigger fence?
We did talk about putting Arborhorts along the back, but he hasn't had an issue with it and it, like, but the wood, it is a very beautiful structure, but if that's a requirement, it could certainly be accomplished.
And when, I guess my next question is, when this got, when was this constructed?
It was construction was started on-site for installation on November 8th, 2024, and completed on...
Sir, could you please, could you please speak into the lectern so we can have it on the record? If you could introduce yourself and name and address.
I'm with Cedar and Stone, 3345 West Jefferson, Cayettsville Road, West Jefferson, Ohio.
And your relationship to the project?
I am the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
We started the installation on November 8th, 2024, and completed the installation on December 2nd, 2024.
Okay, I have a follow-up for you then. Were you aware of the height restriction in the code at the time you were building it?
I wasn't aware until we had to apply for the variance the first time. And then from the discussions in here and the ideas between us and the whole committee, we decided to cut back the rafters to reduce the overall height to the 16 and a half feet because we understood at leaving the meeting that if it had come in at 16 and a half feet at the start, it could have had an in-house approval. So we took it as we could resubmit the drawings and get, move forward, and I submitted for inspections and didn't get a reply because it wasn't, the process wasn't fulfilled as we thought it was.
Okay. And is there any way to modify that building to get it to the 15 feet?
There's always a way to jack up buildings and move them or drop them and so forth. It would be quite intrusive. The easiest way would be to cut the upper rafters back. We've already cut them back nine and 13 sixteenths inches horizontally to get to that height because it's a three and 13 sixteenths pitch, I believe. So we could cut them back further, but aesthetically, in my personal design and design opinion, it would look funny having a reduced overhang at the upper end because typically the rafter span between beams, I use a proportion for dimensions of overhangs for a balance of aesthetics, just from the years of doing this and customer feedback and so forth. So I would hate to cut that back, but yes, if we took it back to that upper beam, it would probably, I have my CAD file here, so I can take those measurements and tell you for sure. But, well, is the question to get it down to 15 feet from 16 and a half? Is that what you asked?
That was, yes.
Oh, well, we would have to do that and lift the entire structure and cut off the bottom, which if it was just post and beams, that's not the end of the world. I can jack it up, chainsaw off the bottoms, drop it back down. But you can't see from this picture, but that whole back third is walled in with tongue and groove siding, stud framing, and so forth. So that would be, anything's possible. It would not be easy.
Thank you. I have one more question for the applicant. Just the question about receiving all the communications, did you not get them from the city?
I did not. I was not primary on that one. I'm a guest on this one. Corey submitted the variance the first time as a contractor, so I did not get any notices.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tamarkin.
Thank you. I guess kind of for the contractor, you know, you're in the business. Is it standard to start construction without building permits?
No, any thoughts? When we left the meeting last time, we were told, at least you can verify this, but when we left, we understood it as resubmit the revised drawings to meet the agreed height we had in here, and we were good to move forward. And the building department had already approved it and stamped it at that point. So I took that as we were good to go. And there was no foundation footing inspections on this because the foundation system was already in place. So it's a framing final inspection in one. So we got cranes out there and just got going and got it up, thinking all the inspection we had submitted and inspections. We didn't have to wait for anything to be done because the inside stud framing is fully exposed so that nothing's covering up any of the pertinent connection details. And so that was, we thought we were following the advice of the committee and doing the right thing.
So I went back, I read the minutes from the first meeting, and, you know, I certainly can see where there was some confusion between 17, 16 and a half and 15.
Okay.
That I could see. A struggle trying to figure out why and how you build something, you know, without the final building permits, without, you know, when we said you need administrative approval, you still have to chase down and get that approval. It just doesn't involve, you know, the seven of us. It involves staff, and then they would have discovered that, hey, maybe, you know, we can't do that. You got to come back in front of us.
Yeah, I had the stamped building plans on-site as paperwork, waiting for the, all the correct paperwork that I'm used to seeing with the permit packet. We truly just thought we were following the advice and not doing anything wrong. And we were just waiting for inspection, and I was submitting either through the portal or calling, I can't remember, trying to get framing and final inspections done because we didn't have any footing inspections. And I just didn't hear anything, and we just finished it rather quickly in cold weather.
I have a question for staff. Is a stamped building plan the same as a...
No, no, it is not. So plan approval and permits are two totally separate things. Plan approval is a state requirement. A permit is a local requirement. So stamped plans, that's a plan approval, that is just, and that meets building code. So there's multiple departments that have to review those permits as well. Like Maddie already stated, we've reached out a significant amount of time trying to gain compliance and get folks in here, but it just went ignored.
Who did the communication get to? The contractor, the resident, both?
Whoever the applicant is, so whoever the applicant is, they're going to get it, and it's amongst their team to communicate.
Do we know who the applicant was in this case?
I'm the only contact from us on...
The contractor.
As far as I'm aware.
Okay. Let's expect...
I did receive a notice. I did receive a notice, and we, I talked to Corey, and that's when we knew there was a problem and resubmitted.
Before, before it was built?
No, I did May. That's why I came back in May. Or March, I think I got it.
That's when you had the code violation.
Yeah.
Yeah, completed December 2nd, and then we received the first information about a code violation on whatever date you just said.
I think it was March.
Prior to December 2nd, and really prior to the November date you gave when you started, there was a lot of communication that went out. Mr. Blackford, right, the three or four notices all went before the November start date?
So we're talking about several different applications and permits, so there's going to be a lot of communication involving this, so don't know when those were.
Okay.
But when folks submit, there's constant communication. So there would have been communication when they filed the permit, when they filed the variance application, when there's a code enforcement complaint, yes, there's always communication associated with those and with every step.
And never did anyone approach staff for the administrative approval?
If there was a building permit that was in review, that's when those plans get resubmitted and it gets reviewed by staff. That's why there's comments from staff saying, "We can't approve this," and here's a bunch of reach-outs that we've done, proactive reach-outs.
Okay.
Just went unanswered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Shepaka.
Hi, Chris Chair. I was kind of revisiting the same issue we had before. Cutting back the overhang at the time seemed like a pretty good idea to meet whatever requirement that they thought they had to meet. I actually, I don't have any questions for, just comments before we go.
Mr. Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question for staff, I guess it's more of a procedural question. So would I be correct to assume with procedures that there's a zoning certificate that's issued before, let's say, a building like this gets constructed?
Due to the size of the structure, it would just be a building permit. We wouldn't have an additional zoning permit. But the zoning division reviews the building permits and leaves comments on them. So they wouldn't receive approval of a building permit until zoning has signed off on it.
Okay. And I guess that last part was really kind of what I was, what I was wondering. So they can, the building department cannot issue a building permit until the planning staff is good with it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Ms. Paulier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question for the contractor, if you don't mind. Thank you. So you're the applicant, and the address that you use in the application was the address that is your office or...
The West Jefferson address?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my warehouse.
Okay.
Where we build everything.
Is that where you received mail?
Yeah.
And you didn't receive any of these notices?
No mail whatsoever. I received through the portal the first code violation, and I was transparent and sent it to them immediately, and the client and I have been in full contact through this whole process.
What about the voicemails that were left?
I don't recall any voicemails.
No voicemails?
No.
Okay.
And I would take one from a permit office seriously because I deal with quite a few different permit offices.
Okay. Just a question for staff. Is there a way to verify what phone numbers were used or where these notices were mailed?
We do have phone numbers listed in our permitting portal, and we also have all the emails that were sent and everything like that.
So were these notices sent by email or regular mail or...
So any comments that are sent out on our portal go directly to their email, and then they were also emailed outside of the portal and the phone number that was listed. I believe the phone number that's listed on, in our portal and the one listed on the application were both called, voicemails left that weren't answered. And then any physical notice for the code enforcement violation would have gone to the property owner and not the contractor.
That part, yeah. Okay. And then, well, okay. I don't have any other questions.
I'm confused. Are we talking about communication after, like, when the first code violation?
No, I was referring to the, excuse me, I was referring to the communication from the administrative staff when they were trying to reach out to you to let you know that they had made a mistake with the height requirement?
Yeah, we had full communication, and that's how we applied for the, that's why we applied for the first variance.
No, when, right, that was in November. So then in January, February, March, when they said that they had been trying to reach out to you to make sure that you knew that that was incorrect information that you were given as far as the de minimis variance, they had said that they had reached out to you January, February, March, and then left voicemails that were unanswered. That's what, that's what I was trying to ask, like, whether you were in receipt of any of those or whether you...
Not that I'm aware of. No, and I do keep detailed records in my software system. Sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, I don't have any further questions for you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have no questions for the applicant. So is there a motion to approve this application?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move that variance 0019-2025, consider a variance application be approved?
Is there, is the motion by Mr. Greenberg, is there a second?
Second, Shepaka.
Second by Mr. Shepaka. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Greenberg.
No discussion.
Mr. Tamarkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tough situation, and I know it's billed, I know any changes are going to be expensive. I'm a little disappointed at that, the way this whole thing was handled. I think following up on Mr. Shepaka's comment, you know, one option, and I'm not the architect by any stretch. You know, if you take off that, the lip on the top right up here, back to the beam, may bring you back down to the 15 foot. That's the highest point of the building. You know, that may be easier than lifting the thing up and cutting all the beams back by 18 inches. But we'll leave that up to somebody else should this not be approved. Yeah, I supported this the first time, so I will probably, I will support it again this time. After comments from the neighbors, I think 18 inches, it's a precedent I don't like to set in the neighborhood. But again, with this situation, I think it's a tough situation all around.
Thank you. Mr. Shepaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking at, so the neighbors are not complaining about it, which is a big thing. I mean, we're here to, as an arm or enforcement for the, for the public, and it seems like it's a good-looking building and nobody has a really big issue with it. And as an architect, sometimes we take the height of the building in the midspan of the roof instead of the peak because when you look at the peak, it's such a small percentage of what the overall height is. It comes into question. It would be nice if the general contractor would have known it was only 15 feet and started with that. He might have done something with a different pitch. But I mean, I agree with the overhang. You need to keep the overhang. Thank you very much for cutting back some of it to meet that 16.5 that you thought was going to be compliant. So it's a good-looking building, but it's just a funny series of events. Since how it's constructed, all the connections were visible, it went up fast. It fits the inspection schedule. You know, it's already up before you call for inspection. So it's just kind of odd how it happened, and it just happened. I was in favor of it prior, and I will be in favor of it again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not in favor this last time, and I will still not be in favor it now. I don't think that the variance criteria has been met in this case. I'm a little disappointed that, you know, it's kind of got to this point. I just, and I'm just a little, just a little taken aback that a contractor would go ahead and build something without the necessary plan approvals. This is the world that I live in on a daily basis, and I just don't think it should have gotten to this point. But that being said, from a zoning standpoint, again, I just don't... But that being said, from a zoning standpoint, again, I just don't feel that the criteria for the, the variance has been met, so I believe, will be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Paillier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also voted against this application last time, and I will also be voting against it this time, mainly because the necessity is not there, the sun exposure, in, in my opinion, is not, does not meet the criteria for necessity. And also, I just, as an aside from that, you know, I, I think that there should have been a little bit more proactivity by the contractor here in this situation. Not hearing anything, in my opinion, is just, is not a reason to just move forward. There should have been some follow-up with the administration, there should have been some follow-up on the portal, if there was, if you didn't hear anything, or if you weren't getting the notices, or didn't know about any notices, there should have been some, some more proactivity there, and then I think that would have, that would have maybe reduced this unfortunate situation that's occurring now. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. So, my comments are as follows. To the applicant, being the father of a teenage daughter, the UV index is very important. I hear it daily. I don't get it, but it's a thing, apparently. I was not at the meeting that this was discussed initially, so it is unfortunate, the communication breakdown. However, I'm looking at the variance with fresh eyes for the first time, and I don't feel that it meets the criteria to grant the variance as well, so I will not be in support. So, are there any further comments from the commission? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Greenberg?
No.
Shapaka?
Yes.
Mako?
No.
Paillier?
No.
Tamarkin?
Yes.
Hicks?
No. Motion fails. Could we have the next application read into the record, please?
We have application V-0020-2025 to consider a variance application to vary Section 1103.15E Innovation and Manufacturing Development Standards of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Gehanna for property located at 909 Taylor Station Road, parcel ID 025-006726, current zoning IM Innovation and Manufacturing, Darren Ranker, applicant.
Thank you. And I'll turn the meeting over to the administration for their comments.
This is a variance application at 875 and 909 Taylor Station Road. The site is Zoned Innovation and Manufacturing, and it shares the same zoning district as the majority of the adjacent parcels. Here is a zoomed-in aerial view that shows the site. It's outlined in bright red. The site used to be two separate parcels but were recently combined, and there are two existing separate warehouse buildings currently on the site. On this photo, I also caught out the location of Rosen, which are the adjacent neighbors that would be most closely affected by the variance. The applicant is requesting approval of a variance for a 25,000-square-foot building addition to encroach into a rear yard setback. The addition would connect the two existing warehouses that are now on one parcel. As mentioned, both of the buildings were previously on separate parcels until they were recently combined. The addition would include space for a storage cooler/freezer and a service corridor. The addition would only be located nine feet from the rear property line, and the zoning code requires a setback of 20 feet, and the side yard setbacks are met, it's just encroaching into the rear setback. The applicant states that there is a main gas line for the southern building that runs through the middle of the site, and due to this, the addition cannot be moved out of the setback. The application that you're seeing today is just a variance for the setback. If the application is approved, a development plan will be required in the future prior to construction. Here is a site plan showing the location of the addition in red, and then that little blue area, that is the proposed nine-foot setback. Once again, Rosen is called out here, just because they're adjacent to where the addition would be located. Here are some elevations that show what the addition would look like. And then here is another rendering that gives another idea for the size and location of the addition. The specific variance that's being requested is for Chapter 1103.15E, which states that the required rear yard setback for Innovation and Manufacturing is 20 feet, and the proposed addition is only nine feet from the rear property line. Here is the standard variance criteria that must be met in order for the application to be approved. Finally, staff has no objection to the variance request. There is an existing seven-foot-tall fence on the Rosen property that's between the addition and the adjacent property, and we also, earlier today, received public comment from Rosen saying that they're in support of the variance application, and staff does not believe that granting the variance would have any negative effects on the area. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open public comment, and if the applicant is present and would like to make any comments, you have 10 minutes. If you could please introduce yourself, name and address, and relationship to the project.
Yes, I'm Chris Jolly with Darren Ranker Architects, 5925 Wilcox Place, W.E., Dublin, Ohio. So, yes, HT Hackney is the company here. They currently operate, or have operated out of 875, the building to the north. Recently acquired the building to the south, 909, to expand their operations. They are currently renting a facility for their cooler-freezer needs off-site, and they're looking to bring that to this site, bring all their operations together, expand their presence here, and they need 20,000 square feet of cooler-freezer space, and then some additional space for forklift trucks to get by and access for a loading dock. And so, that's how we got to the 25,000-square-foot that they need for their operations. And as mentioned, we've kind of started there on the, if you will, sort of the eastern part of the addition, kind of aligns with, there's a mandor there and a gas main that comes in for that southern building, so starting from there and working back, and that's kind of how we resulted in that nine-foot variance request. And, so, I think, yeah.
Thank you. So, please stay tuned for any questions.
Sure.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment? We will now close the public comment portion of this application and move to questions from the commission. Mr. Greenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question was, has any of the neighbors' commercial facilities sent in any comments?
We did receive one, one email with feedback that I forwarded to the commission this afternoon, and will be updated to the legislative site as well.
Can we get a sense for what that was?
I can pull it up really quick. Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
Okay.
Unless it's not five pages, is it?
No, it's not. I can read it. The correspondence was from Sherri Kramer with Rosen. They have no objection to the request. They would like to ask that lighting be added to the west side of the building for additional security between the two properties. There's shared a photo, and stated that the proposed area of the new building is very And another concern was parking along Technology Drive. Their hope was that additional parking would be added to HT Hackney's expanded facility. The number of semi-trucks parked along Technology Drive presents a safety issue for other drivers. It is difficult to see around the parked trucks when driving along Technology Drive and when exiting the facility, and there have been multiple occasions where parked trucks have made it difficult or impossible for Rosen drivers to make the turn into or out of their drive.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, questions for the applicant? I want to come up here. So, you just heard the issues from the neighbors for lighting and, and parking. Would you, are you, have you thought about adding that kind of information for, for the lighting?
Yeah, to clarify, are they looking, you know, because at first I heard that comment, so, western side of the addition or the existing facility, or both, do you know? Because typically, we wouldn't put lighting so close to our property line, because usually we're not trying to send lighting over a property line. Usually, that's also a zoning restriction as well, but if, if it does seem that, you know, truck loading area and parking is a little dim, you know, it certainly, I think, we'd be happy to add some lighting there, but I would think it would be against zoning regulations to put it on the facade of the building, since we'd be sending lighting, light, you know, over the property line.
I'd ask the city, is there issues with putting lighting on the side of the building?
Yeah, I, I don't want to rehash what we just did with the, the last application and try to have people hear what they want to hear, then, then leave the room, so we can't really get into this because we're not at that stage, so it's going to depend on what they want to do, then we're going to evaluate it, make sure it meets code.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Tamarkin.
No questions related to this, just one out of curiosity, unrelated to the variance. Are there two buildings at the same height, same level, the ground?
Yeah, the contractor has kind of measured it, and they're, they're within just, you know, a few inches enough that we can make that difference up in the, with the addition, negligible slope.
I did this once somewhere where I worked years ago, and we had a big height difference was an issue. No other questions, again, not related to variance.
Mr. Shapaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the fence or screen between Rosen and there? What do you envision in that 11-foot space between the fence and?
Yeah, there's existing fence there that, I'm not sure who owns it, that remain. Currently, I think there's just kind of a grass strip there, I think that would be what we'd look to maintain. If there's a desire for additional landscape screening, it certainly can be accommodated.
The 20-foot setback serves like a fire lane, which is usually 15 feet, so I don't know how that, that pinches. Well, that will pinch into that unless there's just access on the other side of that fence and kind of an opening, but as Mr. Blackford said, that'll get vetted a little further down the line. The gas line was pretty much the precipice of pushing this building back. Is there any way that you can point to where that's at on the map at all, or is that, is that the bubble?
Yeah, where you see, or the, there's kind of a curved line that comes down towards the existing 909 structure, essentially in line with that, that curved line. There's a mandor there, and then the line comes in like right at the jam of the door.
Was that an internal easement, or is that a utility running down that, between the two properties before they got combined? I mean, is there?
I'm not aware of it being an easement, but it is a substantial, I think it's like a four or six-inch line.
Thank you. No other questions, Mr. Chair?
And to touch on the fire, I did speak with the fire marshal about this application, and he was in support, because working with Ken Foltz as well, and we have three-hour fire barriers separating the addition from the existing structures and the property line, and he felt that was satisfactory for his concerns.
Mr. Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One quick question. The, the way that this addition is, is oriented, am I interpreting the schematics correctly that the reason why that's, that's bumped out so much is because of the truck, I'll call it a crossdock, or the, the truck loading, they're, they're the back?
Yes. Yeah, so they have existed, some existing loading docks there where that addition meets the 875 building, so they lose like one or two bays there, and they're adding some additional bays facing to the north.
And that's, I don't want to say that's what, what's, what's driving this, this variance request, but that's, that's kind of pushing it out into that setback. Is that, is that a correct interpretation?
Not so much that, as it is needing the 20,000 square feet for the cooler space, and then needing to have an aisleway for fork trucks to be able to get from each structure past it. So, that's kind of what shifted it over, because that loading dock space at the north meets the setback.
Okay. And this is, I don't think this is really relevant to the, to the, to the variance question, but I, when I was poking around on, on at least the most recent Google Street View, there was, currently, there's, they have trailer parking, again, how it exists today. Is that going to be an issue if this addition gets, gets approved?
Trailer parking in the area of the addition, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, that may have been from the previous owner, perhaps, of the southern lot, but I know that they don't have any additional needs for truck parking in this area, they would have just for their loading docks that we'd have, you know, at the north. And then, they do have some desire for some additional parking, and this, you know, acquiring this site also provides them all that needed employee parking that they are kind of lacking today a little bit.
Okay. All right, thank you. No additional questions, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Paillier.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Were these lots purchased separately and then combined?
Yes, from my understanding, I'm not sure how long they've been at the facility, at this site, but HT Hackney owned the 875 to the north, some other entity owned to the south, and I believe within the past year, they acquired the southern property.
And then they combined the parcels into one?
Yes, yeah, they did a lot combination.
Yeah. And then, this addition straddles where that property line used to be?
Correct. The property line was essentially along that parking lot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Curved there between the two structures.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I don't have anything further.
Does the owner of this facility use Tech Center Drive for parking?
I have, yeah, I have no knowledge of that, yeah.
Because we heard comments from the neighbor that, that suggested that they might park trailers on Tech Center Drive.
Yeah, I could see where that would be a problem.
Okay. And then, you heard also the concern about lighting, so as you progress with the plans, if you could take that into consideration as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't have any questions. Any further questions? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion to approve the application?
Mr. Cherry, make a motion for approval of V-0020-2025 for 909 Taylor Station Road.
It's a motion by Mr. Tamarkin. Is there a second?
Second, Greenberg.
Second by Mr. Greenberg. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Greenberg.
I'll be in support of this application, but I would like to echo that you would take into consideration the neighbors' comments on lighting and the trailer parking.
Mr. Tamarkin.
No comments.
Mr. Shapaka.
No comments.
Mr. Mako.
No comments.
Ms. Paillier.
No comments.
I have no further comments as well. Roll call, please.
Tamarkin.
Yes.
Greenberg.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Mako.
Yes.
Paillier.
Yes.
Shapaka.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move to the section of the agenda for unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Any new business?
No.
Official reports. Mr. Roth, the floor is yours.
Nothing to report at this time.
Mr. Blackford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Promised a little bit ago that would be providing an update to Planning Commission. This is similar to the update provided to City Council, a little bit about what our department's been up to. It's augmented a little bit here, and we'll cover some projects, but a little bit of a, I'll say a refresher or a reminder. I know we don't talk about this a lot, although today we did a little bit about the different divisions within our department. So, the Department of Planning, there's a total of 10 individuals. We have three different divisions. As you can see, I mean, because you just kind of, on a couple of different projects or tonight, see how they, we work together in various stages of development, but again, the Building Division, Code Enforcement, and Zoning. What's unique about Department of Planning is those 10 individuals have over 115 years of Gehanna-specific experience, quite a bit of numbers. I'm in my 11 and a half year, and I think that puts me fifth in the department. Building Division, they're the folks that authorize, you know, vertical construction. The numbers on your screen here, they look very different, but this is not an apples-to-apples comparison, so we did not suddenly but this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. So we did not suddenly plummet by threefold here with our amount of building permits. That's just a difference in the software that we were using for the majority of 2024 and the software that we have today. So permits are actually fairly consistent from what I can tell, even though, again, the software looks at a little bit different. Inspections are categorized a little bit different between the softwares as well. So no real dip in the amount of building permits and inspections with the transition to the Open Gov permitting software, which we had permitting software before that wasn't quite as robust and didn't function quite as well. By far and away, the number one question that the Building Division got and our front counterstaff person, which you can kind of see her in the corner there by the computer screens, that was the number two phone line for volume in the city behind, I believe it was the non-emergency number or the emergency number for for police. So it was, we got a lot of volume with phone calls, and that's one of the benefits from the software is it really allows for our external customers to follow along online and find information. And it really helps reduce, one, it creates transparency, which is a good thing for everyone involved. But it reduces the burden on staff. That allows us to get the more time on inspections, more time focusing on reviewing permits and such. So that question of what status my permit, that's kind of dried up. But we still get a lot of phone calls. We have to retrain some of our frequent flyers there to use the software for scheduling inspections and submitting their plan revisions. Accomplishments for the department, permitting software implementation, that's a big deal for all of our divisions and all the different departments within the city that have been doing that over the last year or two, especially with our Building Division, because the software impacts them more than any other. It's a little bit more complicated, again, than any other division or any other department. And it's been about one year since we had additional staff member approved and filled. And now we do the vast majority of our inspections for building is done in-house. And again, that just allows us to be even more responsive to our external customers and meet their needs. You call us, schedule that inspection Wednesday by 3:00, we'll we'll be out there Thursday. So again, it's a very quick turnaround, something that I think that we all should be very, very proud of. Code enforcement, this is the cases right here, this is apples-to-apples, software tracks those the same between the two various years. What's not up here is inspections, because that's very different in how 1,296 cases, I think that was around 5,000, maybe just a little bit less inspections. So we average about three and 1/2 inspections per case. So again, there's a lot of volume when it relates to code enforcement. The frequently asked questions that they get, since this is a family-friendly program, I'm not going to share a lot of what they get tossed their way. But a lot of it is a little bit of misunderstanding, maybe what's a code enforcement issue and what's a police issue. It's shocking to me how often I'll hear folks, secondhand, our folks, we'll tell them, yeah, there's cars parking, like we just heard, you know, trucks, things of that nature. They'll call code enforcement. We'll say it's, yeah, we can't help you. That's a police matter. Well, I don't want to bother the police. I want you to go handle it. They still won't call the police, even though. So, you know, we have to navigate those things. Certainly in in spring, early summer, when the the grass is growing and the sun is shining and rain, tall grass and weeds, that could be a full-time job for for two of our three officers if we wanted that. An accomplishment, this is actually a very big, big deal. We now can issue warrants for some of our repeat offenders. One of the things that I don't think everyone realizes is that code enforcement has no ability to make anyone adhere to any any code requirement. Alls they can do is issue violations and citations, and then it's off to mayor's court. And then oftentimes, the cycle repeats itself because a lot of times, folks think that, you know, if I paid my fine, I can keep my violation. And that's not the case. It's not a speeding ticket. It operates very differently. So there's a lot of repeat customers and being able to issue a warrant, which I think has only been done a handful of times, and I believe it's had some some positive impacts. What I've been told is that when folks have tried to renew their driver's license, they've been told that there's an issue. And all of a sudden, we've had a couple of properties that we've had literally 10 years of cases, and they've complied after this is in went into effect. So really appreciate everyone in the code enforcement and in legal office and in the clerk of courts office for working together to get that done. Planning and zoning, really, that's the same group of folks. A little bit of data, this is the stuff that you guys, you see us all the time, so this is probably not as eye-opening information. But we've had almost the exact same amount of square footage approved this year that we had all of last year. No residential units approved it thus far. Number one question Maddie and myself get by far and away, by far and away, there's no second, is really, when is my hearing date? We've had a project that got completed earlier this year. I won't name which one it is, but we were asked over three dozen times, when is my hearing date? That's a little bit like, my daughter just went off to college. That's a little bit like her asking when graduation is. You know, we really have to focus on all the work that it takes to get to a hearing date. But that's why sometimes we run into some challenges, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. Again, our accomplishments, it's really the same as the Building Division. Implementing software is a very time-consuming and never-ending endeavor. We're always looking to improve that. And it's really the same as the zoning code we talked about. You know, zoning code implementation, sometimes it goes right, sometimes it goes wrong. Staff misspoke in in November, and that created some issues. Again, that's not a review of of a code. But again, zoning code implementation, how we implement that through reviews, through our meetings, all of our different contact, we're always our contacts with our external customers, internal customers. We're always looking at improving the code, and you'll be seeing us later this year with that. Our department priorities, it's always first and foremost, the continuous improvement of process. All of our departments have process, probably no more than none more than the Planning Department. And we are that yellow area there. That's that's the city. So that's Planning Commission. You're a part of the process. Really, it's our codes, it's staff, it's it's Planning Commission. And I'll use Planning Commission as an example, because that's what I kind of have in my head when I created this slide and that. And so the output is, is really, everyone wants to do their project. So it's basically approval, when is my start date is that that output. Well, the biggest variable in that is going to be the green area there, and that is the inputs. And that is solely dictated by our external customers. So if our process is essentially the same, good example, Planning Commission, you'll see two warehouses on the same agenda. It's not uncommon that one of those warehouses took two months to get to you, and one of those warehouses took two years to get to you. Why is that? Well, if our process is essentially the same, the codes are the same, Planning Commission's same, staff's the same. You know, again, the biggest variable to that timeline of when folks get to a hearing and when they don't is going to be that green box there, which is the external customer and their inputs. That is the the big. So that's the biggest factor. We could have the best code in the world. Best code in the world's not going to assist development, can really only harm the the development and such. It can only slow it down. When I say harm, I mean from an external customer. They're always in a rush. And that codes and process, that only adds to the timeline. So the best code in the world's not going to fix a broken application, you know, incorrect information and that. But we're always looking to improve that. Additional priorities for 2025, land use plan review. We might request some dollars to take a look at our land use plan. Zoning code's been implemented. There's probably some inconsistencies with what the zoning code adopted and some of the more grandiose development parameters in the land use plan. It's probably good to maybe get those more in line with with each other, do a refresh. That might be happening in '26 or or '27. It would probably be a very modest review. There's not a lot that really probably needs to be improved. Another item that could affect our budget request is flood plane. If anyone here has dealt with with flood plane, that's a fun process. Maddie has graciously taken on the role as the flood plane administrator. We have third-party consultants that we have to use as well. Unfortunately for everyone involved, there's a lot of properties in Gehanna that are subject to the flood plane, and that costs a lot of time and a lot of money for everyone involved. So we're finding that out, because this is really our first year of implementing that requirement. And that is, yeah, there's a lot of of dollars associated with that. We're also going to be moving to a new municipal complex in 2026. That's a big deal for every department. There's a lot of preparation that has to be done. There's a lot of paper that needs to be dealt with and that. So that's something we're working on. As I mentioned, zoning code and process is always something that we're looking to improve on. Going to wind up the the presentation tonight and touch on a couple of the projects that Planning Commission has seen recently. Crescent at Central Park, you've seen all sorts of applications on that. Not on this slide are the two applications, the retail and the medical that were just approved. But on here, we have Sheets. Sheets was approved by Planning Commission 2024 last year. That is under construction as we speak. It seems like when I go by every couple of weeks, it looks very different. No idea of what a what a timeline for that is. But again, you saw Q3, and it's under construction right now. The Loop Road was also approved. That's a big deal. I know it's not a glamorous picture, looking at some some curb and some paint. But that's a big deal, because that allows for the development and the construction of those properties that I just mentioned, the the medical and the retail parcels. And then the main project there that's under construction is the apartments, Crescent Wood Apartments. That process or that project really started, I believe, is in 2021. It went through a rezoning. It was smaller. Then they went and rezoned it. It got a little bit larger. Development plan was approved by Planning Commission in the second quarter of 2023. That's getting real close to opening. I think they've reached out to staff wanting some permits for some banners for opening soon or in that. So I believe they have a couple of buildings that'll be coming online here very shortly. Next project, just up the road, that is 825 Tech Center. Again, that is the municipal complex. That is coming along very nicely, as you can see from the picture. That building looks dramatically different than when Planning Commission saw the final development plan in quarter one of 2024. It's under construction. They have all their permitting that they need in place. It's always a moving target when you have a project of this size for when moving is, but it is anticipated in first quarter of next year. And proceeding up the hill from from here, again, not the most glamorous photo, all the trees are taken down. This is the Gehanna Commerce Center. This was just approved, I believe it was in June, by Planning Commission. This was at the Science and Tech Center. It was warehouse there. That was approved by Planning Commission. However, since it went to Planning Commission, city staff has been working with the applicant on an incentive. They've been working with city council, and city council denied that incentive. The applicant has stated that they don't plan on moving forward. So, you know, don't know if that's going to happen or not. But I think it's interesting, because obviously Planning Commission, you all hear the really what is really sort of the first step, and that is, yes, we can do a project. And then there's all these other steps that have to take place in order for it to move forward. And a lot of times, projects don't move forward for a variety of reasons. And this one might not move forward because of incentives, but we shall see. Here's another project that experienced some delays. This is the Morse Road Apartments. If you drive on Morse Road, you'll notice it's in between the the roundabout and and Hamilton Road. There, the intersection with Hamilton Road. That sat cleared for a couple of years. Again, final development plan approval was originally in Q1 of 2023. I think the rezoning was in 2022. They did a slight modification to their very minor modification to their plan in 2024. But essentially, my understanding is this has just been sitting in kind of a holding period until recently, just strictly because of the developer for for whatever reason. There is construction taking place. That's really the horizontal construction. That's some of the land, you know, they're getting the land ready for development. But they're still going through the building permit process. That's still not finished. I think this is the last project. This is the Johnstown Road Apartments. This was December of 2024, went through. This was at the corner of Johnstown and James Road. Lot of discussion on the roadway improvements, the buildings that were on site. There were some of our more in need of of some TLC to be destroyed, and they were. So the site is cleared. They're working on their permitting. I believe they're very close, because I had a reach out from the developer today asking about some some meetings. So we might be seeing some more construction activities there anytime soon. And with that, I will wrap it up. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you, Mr. Blackford. Do we have any questions for the administration? Mr. Greenberg.
I give a permit, and I'm ready to go. And then I don't do anything for a long period of time. Is there anything in the code that says they have to get started within a certain span?
Great question. Yes, and it's going to vary a little bit based off of permit. I want to say I don't want to misspeak, but I believe building permits, it's either six months or a year. I'm not certain what that expiration date is. And and with our planning, like final development plans, there's language for development plans that you have to start construction within a certain amount of time. And that's something like we reached out proactively to the Morse Road Apartments to let them know when some of those triggers were coming up. And that may have been why there was like some minor changes to that that extends that period out. So there are expirations on building permits and Planning Commission, some Planning Commission approvals as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Tamarkin, any questions? Ms. Paulier.
I'm just curious. Well, first of all, thank you very much for putting this together and for going through this with us and for all the work that you guys do every day. But my question is regarding code violations. Do those mainly come to you guys through, like, people complaining? Or does staff see things and then?
Yeah, another another fantastic question. And if I recall correctly, I always want to flip-flop this, but I believe 2/3 of our violations are from from our code enforcement officers. And the other third are reactive to community concerns and that. So the the portal allows for folks to submit, again, permitting software allows for folks to submit their violations and that, and we investigate those. We also, you know, what we see, we investigate as well.
Just a follow-up to that, just from what I have been told. I have never personally filed a violate a code violation against anyone, but somebody was mentioning to me that they tried to do that, and they declined to do it because apparently you have to use your name, and that could be public. Is that, okay, so basically, any code violation that's filed, anybody can find that or anybody can?
Yes, yes, we, that's correct. People use fake names and fake email addresses, but yes, they.
Okay.
I know, shocking.
I was just curious. Someone had mentioned, one of my neighbors, actually, had mentioned that to me, so.
Mr. Mako, any question? I'm sorry, Ms. Paulier, were you done?
I am, thank you.
Mr. Mako.
Just a couple of questions. What's the specific software that you use for your for your for your daily processes?
Yes, Open Gov is the software that we use. We did some extensive testing and and stuff and and that. And, yeah, we're pretty happy with it, to be honest with you.
Well, that was going to be my follow-up. Just what what what's your what's your thoughts about that?
So my honest opinion is, is, you know, it's been a few years since I've heard a recent stat, but I believe like pre-COVID, it was right just under 50% of municipalities use any type of software. I couldn't imagine working anywhere without a permitting software. But permitting software, you know, it's not going to fix a process, you know. So so we have to have good processes in order for any software solution to be to work for us. And the great thing is, is that we had a software before that. But as we evolved, that software had functionality issues and it had limitations. So we knew what our our shortcomings were, which allowed us to be very targeted when we were looking at replacement softwares.
And another another question is, did I hear correctly that you're thinking of updating the land use plan? Did I hear that correctly?
Correct, yes, sir.
And what, I'm so called sir a lot. What's the what's the timeframe on that, if you have one?
It it would be to be determined, but it would be a a budget request for 2026 if if we go and do that. So that would be the soonest would be 2026. So the land use plan, it's it's about six, seven years old, which isn't that old for for a land use plan. But, you know, like I said, I would anticipate maybe a modest refresh. But it would be sometime next year to be determined at the earliest, yes, sir.
And and this is a follow-up. You might not know the answer to this, but would you would you anticipate using a third-party consultant helping us do it?
Yes, yes.
And just, I guess, the final comment, you you mentioned up there that combined with your staff is 115 years of experience there. You mentioned up there that combined with your staff is 115 years of experience there. That's very impressive.
Thank you.
That's very impressive. So that means to me, that tells me that you're doing something right and people enjoy, you know, what they're doing, so, good job.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Shapaka, any questions?
So the experience is about 10 years per person. I mean, 10, 15 years, kind of on there. So that echoes what James was saying, that keeping people around, which is always good, keep that experience in the house. So I had a, it was going to be a comment at the end, but since we're talking about the codes and whatnot, if I do something in City of Gehanna and I don't get a pool permit for it, and I finally pull a permit for it, there's a three times that permit fee snapped on right up front as my penalty. I don't think we have anything like that in our code, do we?
We have a double fine, yes. If work without a permit, building code, to my knowledge, has always had, the fines have been doubled. I will say that there's been, depending on, you know, the administrations, how much that gets enforced, but that is code. We don't have an option not to enforce it, so we enforce it. And I would say over the last few years and such, that it's worked well enough and it's, as a tool, that it's been implemented for zoning permits as well. So it is a, if you do work without a permit, there's double fee.
So the applicant that we had in here, his options, cut that building down, lower it, knock off that eve, do something with it, or just sit there. And if he just sits there, I mean, we're going to hit him with a fine?
No, it's going to be up, it's going to be up to the magistrate for mayor's court as to how that would get handled. So it would be up to the courts.
So that would be his avenue?
Yep, yeah. Well, it's, that's our avenue. We would file another notice of violation and the citation, and the citation brings them into the mayor's court, and it's kind of what we talked about a little bit earlier, where that's about the extent that we can do is issue a citation, then it goes to the court, and it's whatever happens. But that structure is still in violation, so if the magistrate were to say, ah, you know, do better next time, we're still going to go back out there and issue a citation because it's still in violation. So without a permit, without a variance in that, it's...
So the mayor's court does not solve that issue if he, violation and...
They can't waive code.
They can't waive the code?
No, no.
So it's almost like a New York Yankee thing where I want to buy my way out of it to where, you know, I gotta, he's probably got easily a $4,000 or $5,000 change in correcting that. But if I was slapped in the mayor's court of a $1,500 fine, you know, I don't know how he would turn the other way or satisfy that. It just seemed like if there was a financial way out of it, I don't want to set a precedent of putting that out there, but it seems like the city of Columbus, I don't know, sometimes, you know, in other municipalities I deal with, I kind of get around that a little bit. I feel bad for him sympathetic, just being on the other side and seeing how the series of events and things happened for...
No, nobody wins. And that's the thing that I think gets lost a little bit, is that, you know, staff, we have to be the bear of bad news, but we actually, you know, we're on, we have the same goal as every applicant, and that's to get you to whatever the finish line is, you know, as quickly and easily as possible. And in order to do that, I will say it's highly unusual for planning departments to proactively let people know that they could have an issue. And we tried that because, again, it helps us, it helps them. Nobody wins in these kind of situations, but we, you know...
I see that. I see the work that you guys are doing, and thank you very much for that, that end.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. So the streak of excellent questions is going to come to a streaking halt, just to let you know. I did notice there were some people missing from the group photo. So my suggestion is individual headshots in the style of 80s glamour shots for those that weren't in the first photo.
We can have some loud colors as well and big hair. I'm working on it.
And then, so you wouldn't be open to taking code violation complaints through Take Back Gehanna on Facebook? I'm hearing that. That's not an opportunity, it sounds like. That was it. Those are my only questions. Ms. Paulier, what's council been up to?
All right, I have notes. I just have a few things to report. The first, just because I brought it up a couple of times now with the strategic plan, there was Phase One and Phase Two, which was gathering of information from residents and other entities about things that they want to see in Gehanna. We participated with city council in Phase One, if you guys recall, at the beginning of this year. Phase Three is about to be announced, which is kind of what the plan is shaping up to be. They're going to have a celebration at Creekside August 26th from 4:00 to 7:00 to kind of unveil that, and residents are invited. Everybody's encouraged to attend. They're going to be giving away some kind of a sweet treat. Not sure exactly what that is, but they're giving something away. So they've been publicizing that pretty well, and that was discussed. At the last meeting, which was Monday, the committee of the whole, economic development director Gotkey gave a presentation about Creekside, the redevelopment plan for Creekside, first focusing on Creekside Plaza, specifically with flood improvements for the garage due to the adjacent Big Walnut Creek. And apparently, when that was built, when that was developed, it was not developed correctly. So there's flooding in that garage that's been pretty persistent over the years, so that's one of the things they're going to fix. And then also taking the time to improve both the upper and lower plaza. Looks like they're gonna, he was showing us some renderings, kind of a presentation on the screen, replacing a lot of the lagoon that's down there with an amphitheater and a splash pad, and then potentially have the Christmas tree down there instead of where it's currently at, kind of on closer to Mill Street. What else? He was talking about potentially about $23 million of improvements. That will be shared by the city and the property owner and also some grant money. And then a timeline for that, he was saying about 18 to 24 months. And then just one additional thing, just because it's been discussed at council on August 4th, and been discussed at prior meetings before that, was the tax abatement issue that Director Blackford discussed in his presentation. We voted to adopt that design review in, I believe it was June, and that tax abatement incentive failed four to three on August 4th in city council. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Jadwin, do you have any comments for us tonight?
Well, since I haven't seen you all. I got here at 7:01, so I didn't want to clomp up to the ramp. It's good to see all of you. Welcome back. I know we haven't, we've gone a few weeks without having a meeting. Just to clarify something Ms. Paulier said, so it was Director Schultz, our senior director of operations, who presented on the Creekside project.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Kevin won't be upset, but...
I will apologize to him.
But it was a very, it was a very extended conversation, and really, it's not that we are planning to do that. The renderings that were shown was, we know that we have to do flood mitigation work on the Creekside garage, not only on the garage, but also on the embankment, extending all the way from the northernmost end of the northernmost building, Building A, all the way down to the alleyway that separates Creekside from Lou Griffin's lot to the south. So with that work that has to be done, there's also work that necessitates things like picking up all of the pavers because there's water right now that seeps in from the pavers on the top of the plaza, down into the garage. So each one of those pavers, all on the top of the plaza, have to be picked up, and we need to fix the proofing underneath that. And then we can either put the pavers back down, or, as we discussed Monday night, and I'm about to sneeze, so excuse me. Thank you, apologize for that. As we were going through the flood mitigation work that needs to be done, what the conversation started to become was, well, wait a minute. We can, as I just said, we can pick all these things up, we can put them back down again in the same way, or does this create an opportunity for us to do something different with Creekside? Since Creekside has been open for, oh, I think construction started almost 20 years ago. We've now see how it's used, we see what it's missing, we can read Take Back Gehanna, Mr. Hicks, and a number of other pages on a regular basis and see the community's feelings as to what they think should be at Creekside. We went through a Creekside redevelopment strategy just a few years ago where we had community input about what people wanted to see in the Creekside district. So as we continued to work on what work needed to be done from the flood mitigation standpoint, it opened the door to, well, what else could we do? So what was shared Monday night was, here are some things we could do. So as we go through the capital improvement plan and start working and finalizing that to bring forward to council for approval for the 2026 capital improvement plan, as Director Schultz says, we have a large number of big rocks that we have to move in this city. We have a large, excuse me, probably about nine large projects that we have to figure out, the prioritization of that, funding for those things. Creekside would be one of them. And then, to what extent do we want to do Creekside will be the conversations that happen. So we will be doing community engagement around that. The Ice Cream Social will kick off...
There is ice cream.
The Ice Cream Social on August 20th. There is ice cream. You get a coupon for a treat at any one of the number of businesses down at Creekside. But that's August 26th. That will then kick off some additional community engagement around Creekside. But the one thing that we've heard, planning next, is they have given updates at council meetings throughout the engagement that we've done thus far, is Creekside has resonated in every demographic across this community in terms of what people want to see. They want to see it vibrant, they want to see it have vitality, they want to see it teeming with people. Okay, well, then let's talk about what we need to do to get there. So that'll be coming up, a large part of conversations in the next month or so. We invite all of you to attend those. We'll make sure you get invitations to, not only to the August 26th, but to whatever pop-up events that happen in the month following that as well. And I think Director Blackford covered anything. I was going to mention 825, but he covered that. If you have not been by that building, it is really exciting. Take a picture of the rendering and then go stand and look at it because, you go, that's it. It's the picture. It's the picture right here. You can actually see it. And that is a building, I remember MSA telling us it was going to get big and then small and big and small. Now I think it looks small again. When you look at the parking lot and you recognize that, okay, from here over, that's all PD, and the senior center's from here over, and then city hall's kind of in the middle. That building is going to hold a lot, but it is really going to elevate the level of service that we can provide to our residents. It will set us up for success for the next 30 years in terms of the room that's available for us. But I'm probably most excited for our seniors and the space that they will have in the new senior center space with the multipurpose room available for the community, and then the police, and the training facilities and the locker rooms, and just the space that they will have to really reflect the quality of policing that is done in that division of police, and then what they'll be able to do beyond that. So that's all I have, but I just wanted to talk because I haven't seen you, so thank you.
Well, thank you. So as chair, I had two things I wanted to share with the commission. The first is just a brief health update. Many of you may have heard that, well, I was absent from the last meeting because of a little hiccup in my health journey. The Sunday before our last meeting, I suffered a grand mal seizure at home. So was not driving, but at home. It was caught on camera, so it's, didn't make it on America's Funniest Home Videos yet. I did stop breathing, but my wife, who is a teacher, is trained in CPR and jumped into action and resuscitated me until the paramedics arrived. So she saved my life. So you can thank her or question her judgment next time you see her.
What was she thinking?
Yeah, exactly. So I was very fortunate for her being there and being, and her training jumped in. She did not crack any of my ribs, so that was also a blessing. I just remember waking up in the hospital, connected to a ventilator, having no idea what happened. I have no memory of the event, no memory of what led up to it, and fortunately, have had no episodes since then. They did chalk it up to all the trauma of the past year with the three cancers I've been fighting, specifically the brain cancer. But no new tumors or nothing showed up on any scans. So I'm not allowed to drive for six months is the downside. So I just wanted to share that update with everyone and feeling a lot better, starting to get some energy back. The second thing is a little bit tougher to share, and that is that as a family, we are moving out of the city of Gehanna. We still own our house. It's on the market, if anybody knows of anybody that's interested. But I will no longer meet the residency requirement to remain a Planning Commission member. So it's with a heavy heart that I've submitted my resignation to Mayor Jadwin as a member of Planning Commission, because, again, I don't meet the residency requirement. And this will likely be my last meeting as a Planning Commission member. So Ms. Paulier, welcome to the chair.
Oh, my goodness, thank you. I'm sorry that...
So I've been a member of the Planning Commission since 2017. I came on right after the chicken vote, so I did not get a vote on whether we should have chickens in Gehanna. My very first application, I remember, was the access medical facility where the apartments are being built, that Director Blackford already showed the picture of. So since then, we've had a lot of very interesting applications. I've learned a lot and have enjoyed every minute of being on this commission and working with everyone. And again, regrettably, will not be able to continue any boards or commissions with the city going forward. So I just wanted to share that with you in person. Next item on the agenda is any correspondence or actions.
No, sir.
Mr. Greenberg, any final comments?
I'm very sorry that you're leaving us. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Tamarkin.
I would say you're a big loss to Gehanna. You've certainly added a lot. You're one of our experts on a lot of areas in this commission, including Robert's rules, and you will be missed.
That's very kind, thank you. Mr. Shapaka.
I was only here for you, so... Senator that's in Georgia, that's not in her district because she owns a house in the district, but she lives out there, she's kind of playing that rook. You can't squeeze that in?
I would not be doing any favors to Gehanna or myself to do that.
I'm glad you're better. Sorry to hear that, that you're leaving us. It's a loss.
Mr. Mako.
Yeah, just want to echo those same sentiments. It's been a real honor and a pleasure to serve with you and have you on this committee. You'll be missed, and I just wish you all the best. Not to go into any, you know, dire things, but we both have shared a lot of health concerns and, you know, yeah, I just wish you the best.
Thank you. Ms. Paulier.
I will echo everything that everybody said. I'm very glad that you, your wife, was there when that event occurred, and thankfully she knew what to do, and just goes to show that, like, everybody should know how to do CPR, or, you know, you never know. Obviously, that wasn't something that was expected or had happened to you before, but I'm glad that she was there and that everything turned out okay. And I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. I've only been on Planning Commission for, I guess, I don't know, a year and a half now, and you've done a lot to make me feel welcome and to help me understand the rules and procedures and everything you do here, and I really appreciate that, and I wish you the best as well. Hopefully, you'll come visit and stay in touch.
I'll definitely be watching online.
Give me some pointers then.
I do. I'm not a member of Take Back Gehanna though, so I can't post any comments.
You don't, you're not missing anything.
Well, thank you, everyone. That's very kind. Any other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Where are you moving to?